Jan.
You.
Mary.
You.
Mary?
Here.
Um, Mr. Ekin, would you do the application?
Sure. Thank you. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity we have to be here, together to help our city and to um, uh, do our civic duty. We're grateful heavenly Father for thy love and for the grace of our Savior Jesus Christ in our lives. We pray that thou bless us, that we will have a, a good time tonight, we'll be productive and be able to accomplish some things in our city council. We're grateful for those who serve, heavenly Father, we pray that thou bless them and watch over them. And please watch over us tonight. We pray for these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we're gonna skip the marriage, I don't know what she had, I didn't know if she went German. Citizen comments, we go eighth grade.
Thank you. My name is Eddie Frey and I'm on the building at Old Two West Plaza over here, across the street. I'm trying to bring a coffee shop in town. Got some grandkids and a daughter that have moved back in with me and looking to put something to help them out. I went to the city and asked about permits and was told I needed a plumber and electrical permit. I paid the plumber permit and told them when I can find a licensed electrician, I would bring them in for the electrical permit. Licensed professionals don't seem to wanna work in the city limits of Luton, I've had a hard time. My plumber got a call from a company called Veritas the next day and told to stop all work. The next morning, I got a call from Veritas telling me they were going to work with me, the city doesn't know what they're doing, and Veritas left their application. They sent me an application for a commercial remodel permit and asked me to fill out what I could. About a week later, I got a call from the city secretary telling me I need to pay twelve hundred dollars for my permit. Three days later, when I went to pay, I was told thirteen hundred and more fees are coming. On top of the remodel permit, individual permits were required for all contractors. Plumber I'd already paid, electrician, AC, and I'm adding a duck, so evidently I have to get a licensed AC guy and he'll need one, and anyone else that might be needed. I left, I did not pay at that time. As a result of this, I put the coffee shop on hold. Will not have any contractors come in until I get a clear picture of what is expected and the cost. As it appears that you cannot trust city hall to stand behind what they tell you, I will need this in writing. It appears that I am the first person and maybe the only one to be going through this process. I understand mothers that have asked about permits, they were told they didn't need one. So does this process apply to everyone in the city, residential and commercial? Is this being enforced or is this unique to me? How is this communicated to the public? Because no one seems to understand whether you need a permit or not. Again, I am not having any more work done until I understand in writing what's expected. Thank you. You have any comments for me or questions? Not, I'm gonna leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Uh, real Duffy?
Okay, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to talk about volunteerism. Uh, uh, monthly, we have the Feen Fannin out on the square. And first, I'd like to thank the city for updating the marquee. The cynic in me says, uh, that it's interesting to note that in the last six months, it's only been done twice and just before an election, but I'm sure that's just a coincidence. The, uh, uh, again, uh, if we could maybe get the promised barriers, uh, out so that we could use them for, uh, for safety. This, this month, we had approximately thirty-one volunteers. We gave out about twelve thousand pounds of food to, to a hundred and thirty-five families. Of members of the city council, Jan was there. People who were running for city council were Amy Robinson and Tina, Tina Cagle. I think it's interesting, we can have all over town, all kinds of, uh, campaign literature that kinda talk the talk, but these people actually walk the walk because they came and helped. Also, last Monday, you'll notice my T-shirt, the, uh, chamber, oh, by the way, I'm speaking just for myself, not a member of any organization tonight. The Chamber of Commerce, uh, put, uh, porta potties on the square and we had a, uh, a charity event to raise money for the volunteer fire department. We sold T-shirts, we had hot dogs and, uh, chips and soda. We, we sold them here and we sold them out at the, uh, park. And I'm really happy to report that on Sunday night, or rather Saturday night, when we had our annual banquet, uh, we raised over fifteen hundred dollars to give to the volunteer fire department to, to use. And I think that just shows you what volunteerism can, can do in this, uh, community. And that, that's one of the reasons why our, our pact, that, that's one of our, our pillars. Is, uh, uh, there's plenty of organizations in town and it'd be nice if, uh, if everybody could find something that they could contribute to and, and help with. And also, I'd just like to mention one other thing. Various times, uh, when trash contracts came up for, uh, discussion, it never went into, uh, executive session. So I would hope that, uh, tonight, if it comes up, I'm assuming that's on the agenda with the new sanitation rates, that, uh, that doesn't go into, uh, special session either. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council, councillor, my friends and neighbors. Um, again, I bring this graph to you, uh, to show you that this is where, the closer you are to the center of the target, the better your response is for end of year financials and receiving your audited financials from the CPA. The average number of days over the past three years is eighty-four. This council has had a hundred and ninety-eight days to get that done. And we've got an election coming up and nobody in this room has any idea what the financial status of the city is for fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three. It's unacceptable to hide that kind of information. We want that audited financial and we want it now. This affects the way people decide who they're gonna vote for.
You can do it when you're on the council, excuse me?
Thank you.
Literally gave him the first thirty-four days.
Oh my god, damn, Robert.
There's the data.
When did you bring it in?
Where's the data? Looking at January balance sheet, uh, and February balance sheet for the water department. I don't know if you guys actually noticed, but the only thing that changed on here is it looks like the utility fund is even further overdrawn. So it was overdrawn by two thousand dollars in January and ten thousand dollars in February. I'll be interested to see the March financials so we can see if we're digging a deeper hole there, but my question is, why? There are a lot of people that say we don't have any money, but the balance sheet shows a total in checking and savings of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Almost five hundred and forty thousand dollars if you look at it. So where's the money? It's on this report. You're approving these financials, you're saying that these financials are correct every month. And yet you've got a concern and everybody has a concern about us not having any money. We need to know where the money is. This is not a new conversation.
Thank you. Still going?
Thank you for hearing me. I'm here to speak out about corruption within the previous city council and specific individuals who have caused grievous harm to the city of Ladonia. I'm glad you're here tonight because I'm fairly certain my three minutes will not be recorded and posted online by party censors. I am speaking specific, specifically of Chairman Duckworth and the gang of three. Deesha, you are a public servant in unpaid position. You have served as city council member, mayor, and mayor pro temp for decades. You have not been paying your water bill for decades under the leadership of Jan Cooper. No one gave out your personal information. You were the struck dog who yelped. As a public servant, your non-payment of water bills have in years been an under-the-table payment corruption. Dana Burkett White, I know seventy-five thousands of COVID relief fund was placed into general fund by mistake and was never returned to the COVID fund, but rather used. This but, only one example of mismanagement aided and abetted during the tenure of Deesha and Jan. Dana was to put aside nine thousand every month for the grant loan repayment. However, this has not been done since two thousand and seventeen and is only now being addressed under the current leadership to be paid in full. Jan, for years, Cooper, for years, has been questioned to add to your management, have resources and funds payable. Why do you not want Hickory Creek to come in? Is it because they were going to take the ATNT antenna and you would no longer have access to those funds? I was present when opportunity said that you deserve their donated auto because you did so much for the city. And I was present when you, when you're celebratory getting it. It was a bribe and for the last time I brought it up to you, you hit me twice. Louis Avleras, who lives in the county, found out that he owes back taxes to the city because he was enanced illegally under your reign as mayor and backed by Deesha. I'll call you from now on, proxy Duck.
You, no, you can't.
And finally, Duckworth, well, that's my time. If you have questions, please speak to me. Thank you.
Jason? Okay, minutes of March fourteen, twenty-four, special meeting. For the, um, minutes for those, those special meetings, when you're doing. For Thursday, March fourteen, twenty-four, uh, like I said.
I second, you second, somebody.
Jan has made a motion to accept the minutes of March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four special meeting, and Greg has seconded the motion, all in favor? Okay, the minutes of March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting?
I make a motion, may I accept the minutes for March eighteenth, regular meeting?
I'll second. Okay, Greg has made a motion to accept the minutes of March eighteen, twenty-twenty-four, and Jan has seconded the motion, all in favor? Okay, the counts payable for April twenty-four? I'm just gonna make a recommendation that maybe, I thought, Michael. No, you don't, uh, sorry. Um, regarding, uh, our attorney, I respect to Dr. Hamilton, that, uh, that maybe some of the things, I don't know, but for sure, but perhaps TML Legal also can answer some, some of the basic things where there being a chart, I mean, I'm just making a recommendation on that. Stay in there, don't leave her. Just the basic things. You wanna tell that?
Instead of using the attorney, use TML.
Attorney, there are some basic things I think TML Legal could answer.
But that's probably hard to call.
Well, we also have TML Legal as a, you know, for that too, I mean, for for that, it's a simple.
But we wanted to tell you my business, everybody else would stop calling.
They can call TML too. Anybody can call TML.
Yep, that is true. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the counts payable.
I'll second.
Okay, Jan has made a motion to accept the counts payable, payable twenty-twenty-four, and Greg has seconded the motion, all in favor?
Uh.
Uh. Okay, the financial report for March twenty-twenty-four?
I make a motion to table it till after the audit.
I'll second that motion. Okay, uh, Greg has made a motion to table the financial report for March twenty-twenty-four until after the audit. Jan has seconded the motion, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, uh, utility public works department, information report?
We have fixed several leaks. I have Paul on his spare time working down at the wastewater plant, trying to get rid of all that sludge that's in that one stabilization basin. And information, it is now all gone. It has been mixed in with the mixed liquor, and that's not Jack Daniels and Seven Up, that's poo poo and water. And, uh, we're slowly gonna get it into the facultative we're doing where it should have been in the first place. That's what he's been doing down there every day, that he's not doing something else. So this is where he spends his spare time. There's been a lot of, I started trying to talk to the folks, this is really concerning to him.
I don't have an issue.
I'm sorry?
I said I don't have an issue with it.
Anybody? I'm not trying to be a but we've had a lot of controversy about meters and about the policy on people not paying their water bills. You have, or you had almost forty thousand dollars in unpaid water bills. And that's people that just don't wanna pay for it. I instigated in March, we sent a letter out to the twenty-eight people who were not paying their water bills. These were people that were sixty days or more older. One of them was almost a year. But at any rate, we told them they had until April the first to come up to city hall and agree, make an agreement to pay X amount of dollars, whatever they could afford, per week on their, exist on their old water bill, but they had to pay their monthly bill on time on Monday, okay? One person, one young lady out of twenty-eight came up and made a contract. And the first week, she redanked on the contract. Now, on the bottom of this contract was a word in capitals that said, "Notice, if you do not stick to what you agreed on, we will disconnect your service." Not turn it off, because if I turn it off, hell, you're gonna turn it back on again. No, ma'am. When we say, and I've experienced this in thirty-five years of this business, disconnect means undo the bolts and take the meter. And you will not get it back until you have paid what you're behind and your current water bill. This is the only way to let people know we're not in the business of giving away water.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah, you're right.
Now, mud in your box. We recess the box a little bit so that you don't cut it up with a lawnmower. When it rains, muddy water gets in there. When the water's gone, the mud's still there. When Paul reads the meters, all he does is scrape enough off to read the numbers. If you wait two weeks and come in here and say, "You didn't read my damn meter because it's got mud all over it," well, yeah, it's rained two or three times. What do you expect? We don't, that's not our job. If I dipped out and had him dig out the mud of every meter here, he wouldn't be able to do anything else. You gotta remember, I got one man. Yes, he works for the city. But I am his chief operator, I am training him, so I've got a right to tell him what to do. If you want information from me, all you gotta do is ask. I don't mind. I've told you before, I don't live here, I don't drink your water. But I do believe in water and wastewater. That is my life. And I am a double A operator, I'm definitely sure of what the hell I'm doing. And I told y'all before, if you'll bear with me, I'll get this city back where it belongs. That's what they asked me to do. And a lot of people are talking up here, "We want something done, I don't see, we want to be real good," and down here, they say, "Leave the hell alone." Make up your mind. Either you want it straightened out or you don't. If you want me gone, all I gotta do is say, "Leave," I'll leave. But I'll tell you something else. I know where all the problems are. In TCEQ, major problems, twenty-five thousand per day per violation. And you got the biggest one sitting right over there on that water well. Because you're not supposed to have less than two wells. And right now, you don't have it. And I'll blow my own horn. Someone called in early January, no chlorine. They were told in city hall before I came here that y'all had plenty of chlorine. You had, you had one hundred pounds, that's it. I identified myself, I showed them my licenses, and I told them. I teach also water and wastewater classes. As soon as, and I knew people in Austin because I did all the regional schools. They called, as soon as they got back to Fort Worth, they called Austin to check up on me. And my people in Austin, Flat told me, they told Fort Worth, if Charlie Walden's up there, they'll get straight, just give him some time and kinda ease off on the people. And that's where you are right now. I'm sorry, I breathe and eat and sleep water and wastewater because I believe in it. And without it, you've got no city. What would y'all do if everybody had to have an outhouse? You ever been around a bunch of outhouses? Smell like poop and dummies.
Well, I think it's, uh, very nice that someone has actually taken a little bit of time to kinda talk to us.
I've told you all along, I told you the first city council, me, all you gotta do is ask me. But nine out of ten people that come through that door, they got an attitude. I've said something. I'm eighty-four years old, but you push me, I'll push back. I won't handle BS. If you ask me a straight question, I'll give you a straight answer.
Don't other cities take people to court that owe water bills? Besides pulling the meter?
Most cities now, they do just what I do, they go pull the meter.
Go pull the meter, yes.
In the city of Greenville, let me tell you something, city of Greenville, if they pull your meter, they also plug your sewer line where you can't borrow your neighbor's water.
City of Greenville sent us as landowners that if the people who rent our house do not pull their garbage pail into the yard after garbage day, they're gonna take us to court for that. So if you're not paying for water, they need to go to court.
I don't really think they can legally do it, but you know, if they can BS you into believing it, where are they? They're ahead.
It was a summons.
But I don't have anything to do with Greenville anymore. I, I, I worked for them for four years, but I was wastewater, so I didn't have anything to do with the city. But yes, there are, but if you ask, if you wanna know something, I'll tell you. I can undie. Except for the fact that I'm trying to do a damn job for you. But when you keep throwing bones in my path, I can't really get the fine done. I know one man. And he works twenty-four seven. The water and wastewater industry
No one ever said anything but he works. And you need another, you need another person hired.
They need two people.
Right, last month.
When he does, and I'm sorry, I'm physically disabled, but when he digs a ditch or undoes a sewer, I've gotta be there with him because he's working under my license.
I stated that last month.
If they had the, the proper licensed people, you won't need me. I'm getting, and I told, I think I told y'all in January, the glasses are three hundred dollars a piece, I'm doing it for a hundred bucks and I ain't getting a dime for it.
We cost everyone who's gotten a license here, after they've gotten it, they left.
Well,
That's not just one or two, that's more than one or two.
Well then, what do you want me to do? I can't
I'm, all's I'm saying is
You've got to treat people right. And I know there was something wrong, I mean, they, it, there's two sides to every story, and I don't know about them guys. All I know is the last two companies you've had, and I don't know how many years they've had your system, they haven't done a lick of maintenance. All they've done is read your wells and your wastewater plan. If you've ever been down there, you've got three lagoons. One of them is called a facultative lagoon. This is your treatment unit. The other two are stabilization ponds to make the water look better. They had taken the facultative lagoon completely out of luck. It was, there was four feet between the, the overflow and the water level. It was, there was four feet between the overflow and the water level. They didn't know what to do with it, so they just took it out. They just turned it off. We've got it back, and it's working. But it's gonna take time. And that's all the report as far as I go, like I said. I don't know all the technical streets here, but we have dig several leagues. And he has unstopped some toilets. But in his spare time, because the biggest problem right now is the sewer plant, he's spending most of his time at the sewer plant. But he has, if you've ever been out there and seen the lagoon, it's about, I think it's two hundred and fifty feet wide. And twelve feet out from the shore, from twelve feet from the shore all the way back, was sludge so damn big, you could've walked on it. It's now gone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
For our March twenty-three four, the Donkey Volunteer Fire Department, report from Chief Grady Day, we had medical emergencies, nine. No structural fire, we had one grass fire. No motor vehicle accident, no landing zone, no mutual aid, no lift assist. Uh, no unknown type fire, no smoke investigation, no illegal burns. And hazmat, we had one natural gas leak. Uh, no motor assist, so total calls for service for the month of March, eleven calls. Uh, says for the month of, month of March, we have one business meeting, one training night, and one counseling night. From Grady Howland, your fire chief.
Okay, Debbie Police Department?
No report.
Can I say, is there anything I can say about the police report? Yeah, I was just, uh, wanting to bring up the fact that we did have, uh, a police, a different police department, uh, contact, tried to contact City Hall to get a, uh, we had an officer that used to work here that was wanting to, that was applying for another, a job at a different, uh, police, uh, city of police. And, uh, the, the P, the sergeant there was needing to look at his, uh, employee records. And they tried to contact the city to be able to do that, that's standard procedure with the police departments. And they got no call back or any response from the city. Uh, somehow they ended up calling me, and then I got with Deisha, and we got ahold of our, uh, police chief, Mr. Roy, Mr. Loewen. And, uh, his response to, uh, was that there are no files uh, here in that office. So I don't know where the files are or anything, but I'm concerned about why there's no employee files, or why the files weren't left.
I understood there was, there was employee files.
All the files should've been in there, I just...
I, I, that's what I'm saying, I, I understood there was employee files left in there.
Yes. He just said there were no files, but anyway, uh...
But as far as no contact, I mean, if they called, I don't know why they, well, I understand what they're telling us. If they called, I don't know why some, you know, I'm assuming you didn't get any information or anything? Or they didn't leave a message, or... So...
I, I just, you know, for the future, we need to make sure we address, you know...
Well, I mean, I don't know why it wouldn't have been addressed at that point in time, so...
That's just what we're saying, I just wanna do that. Thank you.
Okay, old business, new sanitation rates?
Did you get that information?
You're supposed to email me, I haven't received any email. This one says that they were supposed to email by three nineteen. And he had, I don't have anything. No, no, this is a proposal. Sanitation Solutions. So all I have is what we...
So, sanitation solutions, they wanted a proposal request to...
Uh-huh, and, but they didn't, they were supposed to email me back. And we wrote that down, and they haven't sent anything back.
I submitted something to talk about this agenda item. I said, I submitted something to talk about this agenda item.
You touched on it, so I figured you were through.
Oh, well, no, I, I put, I put in, uh, two different ones, because one was...
I know what you, you said on the trash, you, you know, wanted, you know, you'd like to hear discussion. And we didn't go back, so I just figured you were through.
Oh. Well, and I just had a couple of questions about it, is that, when did this contract expire? That, that we're trying to renew?
Twenty nineteen?
Twenty-two, twenty-two, what did it say? The current one?
The one we have right now, is it twenty-two? But, but the contract ended before that.
I think it was automatically...
No, no, I understand that, well... Okay, let me, let me back up. They sent us the, the current contract.
It was like, remember, the only one he sent me was the one that I kind of liked once...
And it was like, the, in twenty-two? Right. So, answering your question, the current contract we have expired, and we have just been going along and increasing the rates as they've come along, per year.
Okay, now, what was...
So they did not, they did not renew the, or they did not, the contract was not updated.
Well, is there any reason why in twenty-twenty-two, we didn't go out for a competitive bid to see what, what the market, uh, was for these kind of things? These kind of services?
I can't answer that, I don't know why we didn't.
Because, uh, this, this kinda seems to be symptomatic of contracts in general.
I, I think, I think that in twenty-two, it would've been in twenty-three. I don't wanna give you dates, 'cause I... Sanitation Solutions sold. They sold to another company, another person or whatever. And at that point in time, they would not give us any kind of quote or anything. So the only one we had was Republic. And we never did seek up elsewhere.
Because it, it just seems that this is symptomatic of, of contracts in general. It's like there was a Freedom of Information Request on the AT&T contract. And, uh, they were, you folks were able to find a couple of pages of it, but, uh, of the, uh, you didn't have the whole contract. So it's just... And then, and then frankly, you throw in the, um, uh, water, uh, system, uh, asset transfer, and then you can kinda understand why people were getting a little bit nervous, because like on that contract, you guys didn't do your due diligence on that. Everything is worth millions of dollars.
Let's go back and talk about sanitation, so, that's what the agenda item is. Um, we did contact another company, which was...
Sanitation Solutions and Republic.
No, there was another, yeah. Yeah. Uh, we, we did get a, a quote from Daniel Weeks. But he was higher than Republic, so... That's why we're seeking to go to get some information from Sanitation Solutions. They said we'd get something back by three nineteen, we haven't received it.
Now, one thing, uh, and it's a sore spot with me, and I'm sorry, Greg, but, and all these people that you, you're, you're dealing with, had, uh, uh, excuse me, uh, has, has, have people tried to, to see if they can serve, uh, and collect everybody's trash? I realize there's a, a certain situation, but, uh, uh, does anybody ta, uh, mention to these people about as part of the contract, they need to, uh, make a, uh, an accommodation to where it's acceptable to, uh, to, to the person who has, uh, a, a problem with, with the, uh, uh, trash picked up, to where they can pick up their trash?
Okay, I know where you're going with it, but let me just say this. The city of Ldonia is responsible for the roads, the streets. And if the trash truck can't turn around on that street, it's the city of Ldonia's problem. It's not the sanitation company.
But the thing, as, as, as we discussed before, it's like there is some, uh, value, uh, to, to, to the servant, to the portion of the service that, that's being given. And nothing's being paid for it, and I'll give you an example. The people in, um, um, Wyndham, all they have, they have, uh, everybody has to bring their, uh, trash up to a dumpster, and they pay twenty dollars a month for that.
Okay, well, we'll, I guess we can set up a central solution, I mean, central area where we can all wrang our garbage up here.
Are we having no problem with that?
Well, you wouldn't, but I guarantee you, other people would. So, I mean, we, we, we can put that on the agenda as, as suggested, and see how far it goes.
Okay, right now, the new rate is fifteen sixty. I believe, uh, we're, uh, seventeen twenty-five is what, um, we're doing right now. Charging. And if you have an additional, uh, cart, it's seven dollars and fifty cents. Is what they're charging us.
Yeah. Yeah, because we haven't gone, we haven't gone to the seventeen twenty-five.
Well, seventeen twenty-five is what we're charging now, on the bills.
Yeah.
Right, we, we didn't, our increase wasn't to cover what we were charging, and to have the same difference. We're gonna have to get that straightened out.
We need to really put around the...
Yes, because we got people, we got three and four cans.
Some of them still have sanitation solutions.
That's, yeah.
They don't maybe pick up on anything that's not...
But they don't know.
Okay, so, the current rate is seventeen twenty-five for one cart. And there's, and, um, Republic Services is charging us fifteen dollars and sixty cents.
Can you say that again, please?
The current charge for one cart is seventeen twenty-five. And Republic Services is charging fifteen dollars and sixty cents.
Fifteen sixty?
For one cart. And then seven fifty for an additional cart. If you have more than one.
City doesn't even know who has all the extra ones.
No.
So then the difference is what the city makes off of it, between sixteen and fifteen?
So, do we know what the difference was before? What we're being charged before?
Okay, the, okay, it was fourteen eighty-one. And they increased it seventy-nine cents. To fifteen sixty. And we're charging seventeen twenty-five.
Now, so, I mean, that should cover it then? I'm not seeing something wrong.
We're making a dollar sixty five. We've had that seventeen twenty-five minus fifteen sixty.
Right, but what were we making? That's what I'm, I'm asking.
Well, they charged prior to seventeen twenty-five.
Two forty-five.
Oh, that's what, that's what...
That was hard math.
We're saying we're losing seven, we're not losing, we're just not regaining that seventy-nine cents.
Well, well, I, I bet the difference is, they're, they're charging us for two carts. And somebody's just paying for one, then we would be losing money. You see, well, so actually, that needs to be...
Deisha, what is their rate for a second cart?
Seven fif, uh, right now, it's seven fifty.
And what are y'all charging for the second cart?
The one's part of my, that are, I don't think, there's several people that don't, that have to pay to me. We don't know.
No, but how much are we charging for an extra cart, just not to beat them? Cause right now, if they had two cart, if they had a cart and an extra, it would be twenty-three ten.
And that's what I was looking at, the rate codes. I don't see that, that's a item, it's one of my items, just hard to argue about. Having that rate code. For like, when, to trash cans.
Right, right, right.
They increased the second cart by thirty-eight cents.
It's amazing it happened, what, uh, on seventeen ninety.
I think it's, instead of going up at this time, maybe we oughta see how many carts that were not. Cause even if we increase it, they're still not gonna be paid for, and they're still gonna be getting two.
That, that is our large problem right now, is getting the carts where they're supposed to be, and collecting the ones back that are out and about, that are not supposed to be. There's a bunch of them.
So, if we, like I say, if we increase it, we still would be doing justice, because we're still...
We're still losing all, all those other carts out there. Okay, this, uh... Alright, so... I'm supposed to get that three nineteen, not four nineteen, so...
A lot of money, they're pretty much...
This... I'd like to know what sanitation solutions can do, would like to know that. Let me, I gotta contact, cause I mean, that's like, um...
Is it gonna be same thing, they're charging Honey Grove?
No, uh, I mean, I can't tell you that, I don't know. Cause they negotiated that contract, and then they, they may be, they may be good with it, and they may say, well, we're losing our butt on it, and we're... Then they gotta make the, make the, the mileage from Honey Grove to here also, cause they're out of Paris, so... I, I would like to talk to Republic and find out, what do we do to... What do we do to find all the carts?
Does it show, uh, how many carts there are?
That they gave us?
Or, or, uh, an additional, an additional? How many's got two, two in the world, how many are charging us with an extra one?
So, they're saying there's twenty-two extra ones, two hundred and forty-four, regular ones. Twenty-two extra. Here's the, I'm gonna look at that. That's the, this is.
And I guess all these that are, that got the bigger ones, they're, they're, they're paying, um, we're getting the right amount off them, uh.
I think that they all end up too.
No, I mean, they're, they're, uh, they're showing, they don't have more than what they're showing, the ones that got the big ones.
It's a twenty-two acre, we need to locate.
There you go, there's, there's a house on, um, that empty.
Yeah, we need, we need to find out how to, what we, what we do to locate all the containers. Can we go through R V S and then tell us, or can we look through our, through their accounts and say, see how many, uh, cans are supposed to have?
I'm sure we can, like.
I mean, doesn't mean they're gonna, they're gonna be out in front of their house or anything. That's what I'm saying, yeah. Right.
Cause people, they're leaving and having, wanting to turn on one, are we picking up those?
Yeah. We, we need to talk to Republic first here and find out how we locate the, the carts. And they, they don't, I, I asked them that one time before and they don't assign it to an address.
So the extra carts we have up here, they aren't charging us for, right?
No, they're charging us for twenty-two, I think.
Yeah.
But if any, some empty ones up here, like for new people, they're not charging us for those, are they, or do you know?
I don't know if they left some for, for new, new accounts, or if they just gave us the extra twenty-two and said, dispense them as you need them, you know?
Or is it included in the two hundred and forty-four?
We need to talk to them. Okay, so, what do we, what is our, what do, uh, try to get sanitation solutions to give us a quote and contact Republic? Now the excess container.
And who, what do you say on R V S if they're having to deal with it?
Yeah.
For that.
Even, even at that, I mean, you'd have to go basically house to house, is it? I mean, cans have to. If they had extra ones.
Yeah.
But what about the ones that do have extra ones that?
Sometimes though, you find the situation where somebody's moved and the cart wasn't picked up.
Right.
And that's where they get the extra cart on. Whatever.
Yeah. But over on Oak, Oak Lane, low, ball and away.
Two, I think there were two, I think it might be in the regular and then he had some weird ones, seven, five or something, it shouldn't have even been out there.
Okay, so what do we wanna do?
Uh, I make a motion, we table this till we talk to sanitation solutions and Republic. And try to locate the carts. And get them collected, the ones that are not being paid for.
Or vacant houses too.
Because it should be, if you take the bill.
Okay, uh, Greg gives my motion to, uh, table the new sanitation rates until we can speak with sanitation solutions and Republic Services. And, uh, to try and get started locating the extra can carts, uh, and get them collected. Debbie, is seconded the motion, all in favor? Okay, well, number one, I'm prepared.
We're, we're in, under a T C Q violation at this point, have been, since the well went down. We have got to, we've got to get it fixed. So, um, at this point in time, our funds are not raised, of course.
Now, do we have any, um,
Yes, yeah. We've got one from Wiseinger, which is the least, and which I would. Thirty. Thirty, thirty-eight? I, I do, but I don't have it with me.
Who was the other?
Uh, C and C. C and C, C and C did bid, but they didn't got.
So they haven't given us a bid on this, C and C?
C and C did, yes. And it was.
Wasn't Wiseinger cheaper?
Yes. Since Wiseinger has done that well before, uh, my suggestion is let them do it again. And they, they do have the cheapest quote.
Is there a choice one?
Alright, okay, I can't remember. It's either thirty-two or thirty-eight. Yeah, it's a lot of difference.
Yeah.
I don't remember what it was.
I don't have it.
I don't have it. Hmm, it may have been. It was in our special meeting, but we don't have a cost. I didn't miss.
Charlie, uh, thirty-one ten to thirty-two.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I wanna say it was thirty-two nine something, or something like that, thirty.
And C C Water's special.
Thirty-three thousand.
C C was thirty-eight thousand? Thirty-eight thousand sixteen.
And where you got Wiseinger?
Thirty.
Wiseinger was thirty-one ten.
Yeah.
To thirty-three.
No, out.
Yeah, a thousand.
I wish it was a hundred.
Right.
So, um, again, we need to act on this soon. Uh, the sooner the better, because we, we're.
We can't have a well down.
Can't have a well down and if that, if we, and I, I mean, also, we, I mean, we've lost well two twice in the last month. When I say lost, it, um, it shut down on us. And then we had to babysit it for, um, one day, stay down there till.
Twelve hours.
Yeah, seven thirty that night.
I stayed down there all day.
So, and then the next time. It was about, uh, it was a full day that next time too, so, I mean, we're playing with fire.
Did you get C and C, uh, above ground sitting down?
Yeah, but that's, that's kind of out of our,
Yeah.
Out of our range at this point.
That's just a, another business they throw in there.
Right, right.
Like I say, uh, Wiseinger, it's familiar with them.
It's pulled out when he's done work on them before, so.
Both of them, actually, I think, so. They're, when they're coming.
Is this the money issue right now? We're not expecting any big windfall right now, so. Do we wanna, do we wanna take a chance and say, hey, we gotta get it done, do it?
We can afford that, both wells down.
I, I understand.
But can I say something like we could pay half?
Not Wiseinger. That was C and C. But, but he said we could pay half at that time and then half thirty days later. Thirty days don't help us a lot, but.
Now, the man that we're talking to is about the, um, the grass that we had? Would that fall under?
It would, but we haven't heard from him, so.
It takes his part, the board.
Right, we haven't heard, so. So, you know what's gotta come out of that, right? We got like forty-five thousand just gotta come out of that. So. Uh, that Simmons is in there. So that puts it, puts it pretty tight, but if we, we can swing that, but, um, um, I mean, nothing is a hundred percent, but, uh, Wiseinger was pretty adamant that, um, we have to go through their pay, payment people or whatever, and they want it, you know, when it's done.
The loan didn't start to twenty-eighteen, so it was just, so I reset it five twenty-seven. Thank you. We didn't have what we really want, but we also didn't default on that loan till we're gone.
We got some money through that home, home, uh, grant deal. But Diana got back with us yet either, to see what's, what actually coming back to us. Okay, I make a motion that, uh, we accept the, the, uh, quote from Wiseinger and, uh, get them to go ahead and get started ASAP.
Okay, break of the motion.
Any clear, in it Wiseinger and who, what was the?
C and C.
Do you know, Mulliken? Is it Mulliken?
Milliken?
Milliken. Milliken, sorry. Out of Fort Worth. Do you even take time to get it?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, hey, it, it, it's only ma- uh, we only got a motion now, if y'all wanna, you know, do something different. It's up to grabs.
I'll make a motion that we second, um, Greg's, uh, motion, uh, due to, to the, um, emergency of this situation. All in favor? Okay, uh, new business fencing, uh, syrup plant bin.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Walton, got someone to come out and give us a quote on the fence. And, um, the material cost for the fence is seventy-three thousand. Uh, that's not including taxes, of course, but we should, uh, be okay there. So, the materials price is due for three days, if we already have seen it that, so, anyway. Uh, that's understandable too, with price changes.
Yeah, that's why I put that in the.
No, I understand, mine's two days, so.
And that is, that is cost.
Yeah. So, uh, total estimate for the fence installed would be a hundred fifty-nine thousand and seventy-nine dollars and fifteen cents. I mean, we, we need to get another quote, there's no doubt about that, but, uh, that's giving us an idea pretty well where we're gonna be. Uh, the last time that was quoted, it was around a hundred fifty thousand, and that's been several years ago, so. I think it was a, it was a hundred fifty? You remember? I thought it was a hundred.
Had said she had them, somebody told her two hundred thousand.
That's what I was, that's what I was.
Anything over fifty thousand dollars, y'all have to bid out.
Okay, well, I, I remember a hundred fifty, but, uh, I remember it's not the greatest, so. Yeah, it could have been, could have been. I know this has been toss, tossed around for a long time, so. That's another one that we gotta get it done, uh, we know that, um, and even if we got started on it or whatever, maybe we can work into it and maybe a fence company would say, hey, we'll do the front side. And we'll come back next year, or six months later, do, you know, the other side or whatever. And, uh, at least if T C Q sees that you are trying to do something about the issues that you have, they're a whole lot more lenient.
Is this something that, um, you know?
Well, so, uh, do you have any to get a bid?
No, no, well, we didn't, but I'm just saying, you could probably talk to them and say, hey, you know, can y'all break this down, you know?
Her side.
Yeah, and so we can take care of it, you know, a little bit, little bit smaller chunks. I, I, I just a suggestion, so.
A suggestion, but we need to get bids.
We need to get another bid, there's no doubt, we need to get another bid. We can get three, that's fine, but. Yeah, we, we have problems getting more than, than the bids, so.
Yeah, this should've been taken forever, years ago.
Oh, I know, I know, no. So, I make a motion that we get, uh, two more, or, I don't wanna do that. We can advertise, that we can, uh, that we advertise and ask for bids for the fencing. And, uh, see what we can get on, on bids and, uh, you know, tag it till the, the next meeting, I guess.
Can we not go ahead and do? Advertise?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, I mean. Oh, I mean, do it. Instead of table, let's do it to advertise for more, more bids.
Fencing and like.
What?
Is it fencing and like?
Yes, all, he broke it down. So, yeah, it's gonna be for everybody.
So then I'll second your motion to advertise regarding the fencing of sewer plant.
Okay, Greg has made a motion to, uh, advertise to get, uh, more bids for the fencing around the sewer plant. Uh, Jan has seconded that motion, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, um, hiring of new city works employees.
This is something that's, uh, pretty important. I know it's a budgetary issue, but, um, it is, uh, becoming a bigger and bigger problem all the time. Because there's just certain things, and we, we have to look at this, if we got two people, we can, we can do some repairs. If we don't, we're gonna have to, uh, contract all this stuff out, so. Hiring another employee would probably be a win-win, um, 'cause they can do other things, um, along with it, and then if we contracted it, it's gonna, hey, we need to come out and fix this water leak. We're already having to do some of that, and that's just the way it is, we've got, had to call Honey Grove for certain things and, um, every time we do that, that's money we could've spent on an employee, so. Um, again, I know it's a budgetary issue, but, um.
How far along is Paul when he gives us options?
How long's, when does Paul?
We got, well, we had that time, lately, he's got three more chapters in the basic water and he can go take his basic water test.
Okay, so.
And then we'll start on basic wastewater.
And I, I'm, I ain't, I ain't holding you down on this, you got any kind of timeframe, is it a couple of weeks, a month?
Well, if we, if, right this week, like they said it did, we'll finish it this week. And then you have to submit a, uh, request for him to go test, you, you cannot just walk in and test anymore.
Right. No, I understand, yeah.
TCQ is getting lazy like everybody else, so you have to make an appointment to give him tests.
Right, and they only have certain test days.
That, well, yes.
Yeah.
But that's in his book, now, now, he can go, there are some colleges that he can go to and if he wants to do a computer test.
Right.
And he'll know that day whether he passes or not.
Okay.
How many times do they give him to take it, is there a amount?
The, the fee is a hundred and eleven dollars, he has three times to take it. And if he does it, does it computer, and I don't know how computer savvy Paul is, but if he takes it on computer, he can retest right there once, and then he has to wait sixty days before he can do the third test. I prefer the written test because I, you know, I read the whole test first and then go back and ask, because it'll ask you questions up in one place and answer the damn thing on further down, so. I just, and I'm computer illiterate, so.
Okay.
But you have to make an appointment, submit an application through TCQ, and they will notify you by letter when he can go test. And that's what's hurting, because they used to, we'd test two or three hundred at a regional school. They cut that out, they don't do that anymore, you have to pre-register and order tests. The last regional school I went to, they tested fourteen feet out of three hundred and eighty-some odd. So you have to make an appointment, and the thing is, their test sites, they only have so many that can come in and test, so, uh, it's taking some time, it's taking four, five months before a person can even get in there to test.
Okay, well.
So, you know, I can't tell you when, all I can tell you is, if, if it rains this week, we will finish this week on his basic water.
Okay. That still doesn't get us another employee, so, um.
Well, you know, and I've said it before, it's, it's to your advantage to have two licensed people, and like I said, you're getting them for a hundred dollars of, of class. So you're talking two people, five classes, three on water, two, and one on wastewater, so that's four, I'm sorry, my bad, it's all. So for four hundred bucks a man, you're getting twenty-four hundred dollars worth of class.
We gotta get that next man first.
Well, man and woman, I don't care.
No, I'm saying, that's, that's what we, that's what we gotta do.
One of the best operators I had out in West Texas was a girl.
Right, so.
And she'd come out of them mud holes, mud from head to toe.
I, I mean, I don't know what, you know, how y'all wanna handle that, I mean, again, I know it's a budgetary issue, and there is no budget for it at this point. Um, if we can get something through the water board or whatever, that's, uh, that is something that we are hoping to do. Maybe that needs to be one of the first things we need to look at. So.
Basically, we need to table it till we can find out.
Uh, I understand, I mean, you know, 'cause we, we're, we're waiting on the information from the water board or, or anybody that, you know, sent us a check. So, I'll make a motion to table it until we get more information.
Okay, Greg has made a motion to, uh, table, Adam B. hiring city works employees, um, for more information. Jan has seconded that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, increase for bulk rate water and sewer bulk dumping. So what is the bulk rate for now?
Two, is it two cents?
Two cents a gallon?
Yeah, that's, that's the same rate as we charge.
Sewer is what, I'm sorry, sewer is what? Sixty dollars a liter, and that would be that's.
For two thousand gallons?
Two thousand gallons.
Yeah. However, how that breaks down.
Up to, up to two thousand.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, we don't know what they're bringing as far as, you know, gallon-wise, but if they got two thousand gallon truck, that's what they get charged for.
And then how many gallons of bulk water, do you think?
Yeah, very drastically.
Yes. So the guy came to me, he got a hundred and forty gallons, there's a man that comes about once every week and a half, and he might get fifty gallons.
And, and then we've got some that are working on the roads and stuff that'll come in and get truckloads.
Yes, there's a guy that comes from Cat and Mills all the way here because it's so cheap.
I don't know how you can afford the gas, but, but diesel or whatever, but.
So if we left the vicents and a hundred dollars on the sewer dumping. Is that what you do?
Because we work here, um, Mr. Walton, that, um, we really want, we're charging for gallons for water for hours. You know, people that live here, like, for young age or something.
Yes, less than two cents a gallon.
Or two cents a gallon, so, but people that are getting the bulk water, they're getting the same price, people are paying.
Right, a regular.
That was the water customers.
Yeah.
About what we figured out the other day is point one, point one eight two five.
Right.
So we're doing five cents.
That would, uh.
And then a hundred dollars for the sewer, just to sixty.
What's?
Eleven, forty dollars more, don't know how many times the sewer, the dump in the sewer happens.
It just depends on how much flow they have, yeah. But I know the city of Green Bowl, they charge like a yearly fee, and then, um, it's so much per gallon, and then they also send back to TCQ, and then you have to pay TCQ too.
Right.
For what you've done, even though you already have a permit for them.
So, the bu- the, uh, sewer, we're charging them three cents a gallon. Yeah, and so if we went to a hundred. That'd be a nickel a gallon. Went to a hundred dollars a load. So I don't, I, I, I really hate to do it by load, 'cause you might get a three hundred gallon tank come in, you know, or whatever, um. No, no, I'm just saying.
Or per, 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 sixty dollars a load now, right?
Per, per, because of the truck size, so.
So, if you're doing a hundred, you're still gonna be doing more if you're still doing.
Well, yeah, but, but, I mean, I really don't care if it's fair or not, but, you know.
No, I was at there, I said.
I, I, I know what I'm saying, because they're dumping our sewer plant.
Well, all the pads trucks are the same size.
Right.
He doesn't have any great.
But, but if someone else came in and had a three hundred gallon truck.
You really shouldn't.
I, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, this is a what-if. Okay, so.
I think, I think we only, we, we were limited to just pads.
Okay.
So.
Well, that's what I say, y'all, y'all raised a contract with Pat and, and you're not a Pat, but you, you don't, you don't want every section called everything, same thing.
So we just save that alone.
Because it'll kill you.
I mean, we do, to what, you know, to a hundred or whatever.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you put it on a gallon price, it don't matter. Say Pat decides tomorrow that they don't wanna do this anymore, and so someone else comes in, but they got a different sized truck.
Oh, the gallon one, I was talking about the bulk water, not the sewer.
Oh, no, I'm talking, I'm talking about the dump, the sewer dumping.
Oh, okay.
The sewer dump is what I'm talking about, um, so, if you, on the sewer dump, if you went to five cents a gallon, that would be a hundred dollars for a two thousand gallon load, so. And you could, you could, and it, you can adjust that out for whatever size that they have. Now, the, the bulk water, yeah, we, we got a meter, so we're, we're charging them off the meter. And I would say we need to go up on that too, so. We have five cents a gallon, that's, we're already charging, not what we're charging the same.
Charging two cents.
Yeah, for water, and that's what we're charging, sewer too, that's, that's sixty dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, whether it be sewer, sewer dumping or water, five cents a gallon. Right. It's too, it's too much. Ain't gonna get rich off of bulk water, are we? Okay. I'll make a motion, we increase the, the water, water rate, bulk water rate and the sewer bulk dumping rate to five cents a gallon.
I'll second that motion. So Greg is, um, made a motion to increase the bulk wa- water rate and the sewer bulk dumping rate to five cents a gallon. And they should second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, before this goes into effect, do we have to do any kind of postings or anything?
Yeah, that's a Jordan.
Like newspapers and.
Advertising.
I mean, I, I don't know what the procedure is, so.
We have to renew that contract for this, the, that's, I think, for the.
And we'll have to renew his contract, yeah. You just keep adding on that stuff, don't you?
So you're gonna get it posted in the newspaper, just for one week, one time?
Again, I don't know what the procedure is, so, and some, sometimes things you gotta be posted for X amount of days, I, I don't know, I don't.
This, this wasn't adopted by ordinance, this is just a fee that the city council set.
I'll leave it in your original ordinance, though.
Okay. No, I'll find out.
Yeah, so we'll go.
Do what?
And then to look, make sure, to see if it's in an ordinance.
There's an ordinance to set these fees, that, that may make a difference on the.
Okay.
Okay, um.
So it can't put it into effect until that's, whatever it needs to be done, I don't care, okay?
Okay, date for water meet, read, water major reading.
I suggest we start the meter reading on the third Monday of the month. By the way, there's no question about when it's gonna start, when it's gonna, you know, the ending, but, um, we know it's not gonna be on a Saturday or a Sunday or a holiday or.
Okay, and we need to check the ordinances there too.
Okay.
Just to make sure, 'cause I think, if I'm not mistaken, it says to start the eighteenth.
I was thinking it was seventeenth, but.
No, in ordinance that's there now.
I know, I, that's what I'm saying, I was, I thought it was said the seventeenth, but it may be the eighteenth, um. Third, the third Monday should be after the fifteenth, and then give them time to, get them done before the, um.
And that's why we always try to start on Monday.
Yeah, but, but when, when we set a day, the only problem with that is, yeah. What?
Greg has made a motion to start the, uh, date for the start of the order meter readings, the third Monday of the month, and we need to check and see, uh, what the ordinance is state now, and if they do state something, we need to get those re.
Redone.
Redone.
Yep.
To, that's it. Okay, Debbie has seconded that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, impact fee for new water and sewer tiles.
Okay, we should have the notice that Trent put out, and, uh, we got some information from the secretary over there, which was very helpful. We decided a few months back that we were not gonna do an impact fee. Well, now, listening to what they had to say and, uh- Well, now, listening to what they had to say, and, um, the growth they're already seeing, um, which is a whole lot more substantial than I thought it was that they were doing. But, um, they have chosen to set it at the maximum, but that's not necessarily what they're gonna charge. But they are allowed to do that if they choose to. So whatever they decide, it has to fall within our seven thousand or less. And the impact fee, just briefly what, what she was telling, the reason they did this is because their growth, they're gonna have to put in a water tower, they're gonna have to probably do another well. Uh, they've got a lot of things that, because they got more people, that even, even with a, a tap fee that they have, still didn't cover. You know, they're, you're just not, they're gonna, they're gonna fall behind real fast. And so, um, you know, they, again, they know they're gonna need water and sewer system expansion. Well, that, that's the thing, if, if we get growth, this is what's gonna happen. And you're gonna need new wells, new storage tanks, cooling towers, smart meters, engineering fees, add new employees and equipment. Um, and it, and it can help with, uh, maintaining water lines, sewer lines, tank inspections. Uh, maintain the elevated and ground storage sinks that we have now.
Once those builders move out, then the city has.
We, we gotta, we gotta take care of it. And we need to upgrade our skater system. Um, I mean, it's, there's a lot involved, and if we start seeing some major growth, we're gonna be behind. And when I say major, it's not gonna have to be that major. So I think we need to look at this again. Um, she did tell us that soon as they have to run this, what she said, thirty days? And, uh, she'd get back with us and kinda tell us, you know, how things went and all that. So, um, she was very helpful.
And when you get home tonight, you'll see in your emails, the, the memo from me about this. Having the, having the public hearing is step nine.
Right.
So, there's, 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 you have to do three or four land use things, there has to be an engineered study. But it's not like you can't, you can't put it on the agenda for next time and say, we're gonna adopt impact fees. That's, that's not how it works. It's a, it's a step up to it, you gotta have an ordinance that supports it, but it's in your email when you get home, you can just print it out and drink your last cup of coffee.
Thanks, Walton.
I've already checked into a smart meter, I went with three hundred and twenty-five units to give you some spares. Software, the laptop, the whole shoot mat, plus two days of training, was running right around sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Right.
And this is not no junk meter, it's a master meter.
I- is it the drive-by or is it?
It's a drive-by.
Okay.
And I had about, in West Texas, it's Sonora, and I could go up on the hill where our supply house was and our ground storage, and I could drive around the plant and read about four hundred meters, so.
Okay, so, I mean, that right there, that tells you, hey, if we decided to do some smart meters, how many, how many was?
I read thirty, I read thirty-three hundred meters in seven and a half hours.
How mu- how many meters we get for sixty-eight thousand, three?
Uh, three hundred and twenty-five.
Okay.
Uh, Pat said you got around three hundred meters, so I went twenty-five extra. And I believe I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm right, I've got it in there in my stuff.
Okay, uh, so that tells you right there that that's something we're gonna have to come up with.
Yeah, the meters are a hundred and sixty-seven, a hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents a piece.
Yeah, but software is what costs you, but then, then, don't, don't, don't think you don't have to read them. Still gonna have a meter reader.
What you do is you drive around, and you have a laptop sitting in your seat, and as you drive by it, and when you get done, you pull up, you put a flash drive in your computer, you download everything onto the computer, and you take it into City Hall and plug it in, and it goes out to the.
Right.
Thank you.
So, um, I think this, this is pretty important, and we need to, we need to watch it. Again, you've sent us an email, so I'm, um, I will read that and see what, see what the steps are.
Well, Pat mentioned that she was interested, so I went ahead and got a bike.
She did. And, uh, she, she, uh, this is kinda going backwards, but she did say something about, you know, people, uh, giving them options to read their own meters. We got some that do anyway.
We don't have the honor system.
No, I, no, I understand, well, it'll catch up, it won't catch up.
Well, yeah.
Um, but.
Just getting it out of them.
Yeah. But anyway, she, that was one, something on her, I forgot.
Okay, so since this was just discussion, we don't have to.
We don't have to do anything, yeah.
Okay, now a motion to adjourn. Make motion to adjourn at eight forty.
Aye.
Thirty-five? Eight thirty-five? Karen is saying to adjourn all in favor?